Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission. Meeting, session for July 17th, 2019, sorry, I'm two years behind here. And we're meeting at the Visalia City Hall Council Chambers this morning, so welcome. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California. The staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the Planning Commission, see the last page. All public hearings are scheduled for a certain times, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings, or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items, who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months, must indicate this when speaking. So may I have roll call, please?
McAlwood? Here. Millie?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Woodback?
Here.
Here's to it.
Here.
And Commissioner Aguilar and Vice Mayor may be running late. He's not certainly there yet.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn them off.
Yeah, because only can't speak unless they're on.
Who can't?
You can't.
No, I must. I must. There's still one on there.
It just alternates.
Yeah. Item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair, that is me. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record, we're being recorded. And as a courtesy to others in the room today, would you please turn off your electronic devices, that's basically your cellphone.
Through the Chair, at this time, we'd like to introduce new council, if she would introduce herself, tell her, uh, County Council?
A resume.
A resume, if you will.
Right.
Not a resume, but a current, uh, current associate candidate, County Council. Not totally sure if I'm taking over for Matt, but we'll see.
Did he tell you to say that?
I'm gonna introduce myself.
You're gonna, you're gonna, so you're recusing yourself? Alright. At this time, I will open the session to the public for comment on any non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that would, any members of the public that would like to make a comment about a non-agenda item? If not, I will close the public testimony at this time, and we will move on to item three. Approval of minutes for June 26, 2019. Do I have a motion or comments on that?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll psych that.
Roll call.
McAlwood? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Woodback?
Yes.
Here's to it.
Thank you, so moved. Item four, parcel map hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items, or request that it be polled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Is there anyone that would like to poll any of these items? If not, we'll move on to item 4A. Tendent parcel map, PPM 19-009, Thomas and Deborah O'Sullivan, with Forster-
Through the Chair?
Yes, sir.
To open the public hearing?
I can.
You can?
I'd like to.
Okay.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public would like to make a comment about any of the items? In four, 4AB. If not, I'll close the public hearing testimony at this time, and we'll move on to item 4A for a discussion and our vote. It is tentative parcel map number PPM 19-009, Thomas and Deborah O'Sullivan, Forster Weber and Associates LLC. Categorical exemption and conditional use permit, conditional approval of tentative parcel map, PPM 19-009, to divide 17.80 acre parcel into three parcels. Parcel 1, 6.42 acres net. Parcel 2, 5.0 acres net. And parcel 3, 6.08 acres net, in the AE agricultural zone. The site is located on the west side of the Friant Kern Canal and south of Avenue 178, northwest of Porterville. Do I have any comments on this item? Any, anyone would like to make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and State Secret Guidelines, Title 14, Code Regulations 15315, Class 15, pertaining to minor land divisions and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM 19-009, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM 19009, with one exception, the requirement to file a final map.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
McAlwood? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Woodback?
Yes.
Here's to it.
The item is passed, so moved. Item 4B, tentative parcel map number PPM 19-007, Bill Peters, Neil Zerlang Land Surveyor, Inc. Categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 19-007, to divide 1 plus or minus 19 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel 1 equals 1 acre. Parcel 2 equals 18.01 acres in the AE 20 zone. Site is located on property located on the east side of Road 68, approximately 4,900, no, sorry, 4,000 feet north of Avenue 416, west of Dinuba. Do I have comments or a motion on this, item 4B?
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption with California SEQA Quality Act and State SEQA Guidelines, Title 14, California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM 19-003, and the waiver of final map.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
McAlwood? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Woodback?
Yes.
Here's to it.
Motion passes, so moved. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, public hearings. Item 5A. Special use permit PSP 19-039, categorical exemption and special use permit on PSP 19-039, an agricultural service establishment, in order to continue operating his trucking business for three trucks that carry grain commodities. Property is located in the AE 40, exclusive agricultural 40 acre minimum zone. Site is located on the east side of Road 124, Park Drive, south of Avenue 112, across the road from the Pixley Urban Development Boundary, and .3 miles east of State Route 99. And our contact this morning is Ms. April Hill. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman, ladies and Commissioners. The introduction was almost my entire show.
I'll be quiet next time.
The subject site is located in the AE 40 zone. Surrounding properties to the northeast and south are zone AE 40 and contain open land and private rural residences. Properties to the west are inside the Pixley Urban Belt and downtown in their zone M1, polite manufacturing and C2MU, general commercialized mixed use, as the mixed use gave them 99. They currently contain open land and rural residences. Site is not within urban boundary and is subject to the Rural Land Land's Plan, which designate the area for valley agriculture. Project would not conflict with commercial agriculture, but supports it, and the property owners require to sign a right to farm notice. It's in compliance with relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan, elements, and the zoning ordinance. The site is open land, it's the easternmost parcel. There are no structures, at 1.16 acre parcel, a space for parking, the three 18 wheeler trucks, and three commodity trailers, and a food truck with closed shops, overdrilled in. Facility is partially screened from public view by residences. Which we find is an agricultural service establishment, since the business does not, the business owner does not live on the vacant parcel, but on an adjacent parcel. The minor repairs and maintenance occurring on the site are little major repairs or truck washings. The trucking business has indirect access to county maintain Road 124 through the applicant's residential property. County Public Works recommends construction of a drive approach and servicing of all on-site parking areas. Public Works also requires dedication of private additional completed right-of-way on 124. Site plan. The applicant employs two drivers to use three trucks with trailers to transport grain commodities. Fire department requires all weather access, water storage requires suppression for the future shop building, and compliance with current California Fire Code and Grounding Code. Environment Health Services requires adequate storage areas to be properly managed. There is no hazardous materials stored throughout on the site, but if any are in the future, the division requires hazardous and dangerous business plan, conditions of approval included. The environmental assessment officer has determined that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, under the general, the common sense rule, and under Section 15301, pertaining to existing facilities, and Section 15303, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. The project is under the laws requiring security to affect from the environment, and therefore is not subject to SEQA. Current structure on the site was built 2008, but those structures will not exceed 2,500 square feet in size. Notice was the 02 surrounding property owners were within 300 feet, notice was also published and subjected to the 10-day public count period. No comments were received. As you undoubtedly noticed, it was, the use program was required because of code compliance by the issue. The system office is here, if you have any questions. This is the staff.
Any questions? Do they have, no?
Just one question.
Sure.
Oops. Now, can you hear me? Okay. So the fire department is requiring all weather access, is there, they would have to build a road, or is there a road already there to get from the front street to the parcel, or?
There's a driveway.
There's a, okay.
And usually it just means gravel.
Okay. Sink or?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's my question.
I have one question. Is there fuel storage there already, for the trucks?
No.
So they got gas up someplace else?
Easy to do that.
Yeah.
Anything else? This is a public hearing, so I will at this time open the session to the public for comment on item 5A. Is the applicant here? Yes. Would anyone like to come up and speak? Anyone opposed to this project? None?
I just want to appreciate all you guys' attendance here, and we're just trying to do good work here for our culture and maintain the campus healthy, as well as, you know, taking in the feet. Appreciate all you guys' attendance.
Thank you.
Mr. Torres, how long have you been at this location?
At this location, I've been probably three years and a half.
Yes, and I failed to ask, what is your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Arturo Torres, 24, 2730 North Park, Pride, Pixley, California.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? No?
I'm just curious, what you do with the grain?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, we usually pick it up at JD Haskell or Shrimmilling, or other facilities, and we take them out to the dairies.
Okay, I didn't know, sorry.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other comments from, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public at this time? If not, I will close testimony by the public, and look to my fellow Commissioners for comment or a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make that motion to approve a categorical exemption, consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and with State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 19-039.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
McAlwood? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Woodback?
Yes.
Here's to it.
Thank you, the motion carries, thank you very much. Moving on to item 5B. Zone variance, PZV 19-010, Michael and Delphina Guerrero. Categorical exemption and zone variance, number PZV 19-010, to allow deviation from Section 4C of ordinance number 352, the zoning ordinance pertaining to front yard requirements. The minimum front yard shall be 25 feet, and from Section 15C2N, subsection N, pertaining to fences, a fence or wall not more than six feet in height is allowed so long as it does not extend into the required front yard setback area on a plus or minus 7,500 square foot parcel in the RAM Rural Residential Special Mobile Home Overlay Zone. The site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 320 and Mountain View Road, Patterson Tract. And our contact this morning is Ms. Dana Metlin. Good morning, Dana.
Good morning, Chairman, ladies and Commissioners. The request, as was mentioned, is to allow a variance from Section 83 of the trailer community plan. Wait, is that right now? I don't know. Excuse me?
You're testing us out.
I'm testing myself. And I'm failing miserably. Alright. So the request is for that six-foot-high fence within the 25-foot front yard setback area. There is a code violation on this property for the construction of a six-foot-high fence within the front yard area. The fence was red-tagged, and condition is awaiting approval of this zone variance. The applicants, Alaric Michael and Delphina Guerrero. The site is located inside the urban development boundary of Patterson Tract, and the location is on the northwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 320 and Mountain View Road. This is the hearing notification map. The project was noted according to the law, and noticed was placed in the foothills, subject to the 2003, 2019, and located within 300 feet of the site boundaries, where noted by the area. Status DUC of two phone calls, provided by the property owners, and once they learned what the project was, they were supportive. Entitlement is known in Section 16 of Ordinance 352, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general credit service ordinance result to restricted and illegal transportation and personal protection provisions above. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and the project is compatible with this exemption because the variance will only allow the fence within the 25-foot yard area in the RAM zone. The project is located, as mentioned, in the UDB, the urban development boundary of Patterson Tract, and the urban area boundary of Visalia, and land use designation is mixed use. The project is consistent with the development general plan policies. This is the vicinity map, in the northwest corner of Avenue 320 and Mountain View Road and Patterson Tract. This is the area photograph. To the north, this is a recently approved subdivision that is not yet built out, and the zoning is RAM. Surrounding properties are RAM, and to the south, it is R43, which is a residential 43,000 acre unit zone. And all of the properties contain rural residential uses. There are mandatory findings to approve variance, but these would be set aside in lieu of the mandatory findings to approve reasonable accommodation. And there are four required findings for reasonable accommodation. First is whether the housing, which is subject to the request for reasonable accommodation, will be looked for in private and individual facilities protected under the housing laws. And the answer is yes, the applicant's father, who has a brain injury, lives in the house. Second finding is whether the requested accommodation is necessary to make housing available to the individual with disabilities. And the answer is yes, in order for the father to be safely confined within the property, the fence is necessary. The third finding is whether the requested accommodation would impose a new financial or administrative burden on jurisdiction. The answer is no, the entire cost processing of variance application has been paid for by applicants. And the fourth finding is whether the requested accommodation would require a fundamental alteration in the nature of the jurisdiction's land use and zoning or building program. And the answer is no, as the variance application is specific to this property. This is the site plan, and just showing the fence would expand into the front area, and says for common. And that concludes this cast. And fourth, this is our recommendation for approval.
Any questions for Dana?
Just, just one question, I don't see a photo, is the fence already built?
It's partially built.
Okay.
And it was, code compliance went by red-tagged, or the construction of the fence until this variance is approved.
Okay, because I didn't see photos of the fence, so I didn't know if it was up or not.
Well, I didn't go out in the field, and you're going to go ahead and have it correct for us.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, I'll open the session to the public at this time for comment. Is the applicant here? Yes. Would you like to come up and speak? Any comments on your part? Is there anyone opposed? Right over here, ma'am. And please state your name and address.
We're friendly, we don't bite, so.
Congress people always-
We just don't know where we're at today, we're in a new chamber, so we have to play like this.
My name's Delphina Guerrero. I reside at 12698 Avenue 320, Visalia. I live on the residence with my husband, who has the brain injury. The traffic goes pretty fast in that area, so the six-foot fence would help keep him safe if we were to lose sight of him. That's where the all-weather has to be.
Makes sense, it makes sense. Any comments on this side?
Maybe, well, do you want me to ask?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so we're trying to, or I'm trying to understand this drawing, because it says 29 feet from the fence to the house, but then 30 feet from the road to the house? So does that leave one foot? Because then I would be concerned about a visibility issue, but, I mean, maybe the drawing is off.
Sheet ten?
No, that's because of, there's a vestibule that sticks out. There's a pop-out on this, on the left side.
Yes, there's, there's a window.
You see where that, that's the structure.
Correct.
There's a bay window, is that right?
Right, a bay window.
Right, that's why it's a little less.
Well, so what I, go ahead.
Look at the dimension, it says 30 feet from the front of the house out to the-
31.
Excuse me?
31, six.
Whatever it is. And then we've got another dimension, another 29, six, so.
Yes, the 29 is the bay window, and then the other side is garage.
To the fence.
Yeah, excluding the garage side, what I'm looking at, and my fellow Commissioner probably is looking at, is what's the distance from the house to the fence, and then from the fence to the street?
That's a good answer.
Yeah.
Well, it's 30, it's 30 feet from the house to the, if that's the street.
Because then-
It's a property corner or something.
The dimensions are off.
Well, where's the right-of-way? Because there's a setback for the right-of-way, so.
And we measured from the middle, the lying part of the street-
Do you have a sidewalk in front of your house?
Not currently.
Do you have a place for pedestrians to walk in front of the fence?
Yes, it is a gravel flattened area.
And how wide is it?
From the middle of the street to the fence is 30 feet.
But what's the, what's the width of the walking area? From the curb to the fence?
Hmm.
Is it three feet, four feet, approximately?
No, it's more like 10 feet.
Okay, so it's a very wide walking area.
Yes, cars can park.
Okay.
Can park forward, and still-
Do you have curbs and gutters?
No.
Okay. So this is part of the street.
It's a new development area, there's new construction, like, as Dana had said, that there's new construction around us, behind us, so they are-
So the question is, is that in front of the fence to the street, how do pedestrians go by? They're in a-
It's a gravel flattened area. It's, it's asphalt placed in that area, there's enough room for the street and cars to park forward towards the fence, and still have a safe walking around a vehicle. I think, you know, when they built the county roads, they asphalt a certain dimension, and then there's still right-of-way on either side of that that is dirt, and that's what we're talking about. And then is their property line, and that's where the fence is.
So with the new development going in, would there be an issue with the, I don't know, road being expanded to allow the traffic, and then this fence being in the way?
If it's not the right-of-way now, they're, they've got a right to build their fence.
The fence is on the property line, and not in-
Right, if they need to widen the road, then they have to come and buy some property from people.
Okay, I-
But it's like most county roads, the county road is a certain amount of width, then there's the right-of-way, you can't build a right-of-way, it's the same as the city of Visalia, the right-of-way is where the sidewalk is.
And we went along with all the other neighbors' fence, so we went straight across, so all the other-
Well, then that's accommodating.
...are the same line.
That makes it easier to picture, so, yeah.
I got it.
Okay.
Got it.
What's the material, the fencing material?
Rod iron.
Rod iron, so you'd be able to see through it, yeah?
Yes.
So visibility isn't an issue either.
Okay, thank you.
There's like two feet that we're allowed to support this elevation.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Any other comments from the members of the public at this time? If not, I will close comment by the public at this time, and we will look at item 5B, PZV 19-010, for a recommendation, motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved zone variance, number PZV 19-010.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
McAlwood? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Woodback?
Yes.
Here's to it.
Yes.
So on this next item, before Wayne-
So on this next item, before Wayne recuses himself, I have to recuse myself. Our firm is the developer of that site, so I need to step aside.
I also will have to step aside. I am part of that development process.
Who's next?
Who's the next in line? Is it you, John?
No, it wouldn't be me.
I'm the next in line, so...
Oh, Bill is?
Give it to Maria.
Maria.
Well, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna take him after Bill, so...
And again, as a disclosure, I have in the past done work with Mr. Nagra, and, but it's been more than a couple of years, so I'm okay.
Okay. Wow. So, so here's your trial by fire. You get to correct me a bit.
Maybe not.
All right, so we're on item 5C, and this is for categorical exemption and zone variance number PZV-19-011 to allow deviation from Section A3 of the Traver Community Plan Development Standards, Mixed Use Zoning District, Streetscape Signage SI-7 pertaining to large signs that dominate a building facade or the streetscape should not be permitted, and SI-18 pertaining to billboards being strictly prohibited on a 2.0 acre parcel in the C2 MU General Commercial Mixed Use Zone. The site is located approximately 1,232 feet south of Merritt Drive, bounded on the east by Sixth Street and on the west by State Highway 99 in Traver, and our contact is Dana Metlin.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning again. So, yeah, this is kind of repetitious, but the request is to allow a variance from Section A3 of the Traver Community Plan reverting adopted development standards. The applicants are Gascarn Nagra and Ranjit Nagra. Site is located inside the urban development boundary of Traver. And again, location approximately 1,200 feet south of Merritt Drive between SR-99 and Sixth Street. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law, and notice was placed at the official sign date on July 3, 2019, and property owners within 300 feet by the site boundaries were notified by mail. Staff has not received any comments regarding the project. Entitlement is found in Section 16 of Ordinance 52, which authorizes that filing of variance applications will be practical difficulties, unnecessary hardship results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result to a strict analytical interpretation in accordance with the provisions thereof. Project is categorically exempt from the SEQA. This zone is Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of new structures, small structures. This project is compatible with this exemption because the variance will allow the construction of on billboard sign that will be located on the property that is zoned for such use. Project is located within the urban development boundary of Traver, and the land use designation is mixed use. The project is consistent with these relevant general plan policies. This is the vicinity map, again, in Traver on the east side of SR-99. This is the aerial photograph. The site does not have any structures on it or improvements. This is the zoning map. Project is zoned C2 MU, which is general commercial mixed use. These surrounding properties are zoned C2 MU, C3 MU, and M1 MU. The property to the north is vacant. The property to the south contains gravel farms. The property to the east contains a plastic injection molding factory. And the property to the west is State Route 99. The request is for variance from two development standards that were adopted with the Traver Community Plan. Both of these development standards pertain to the mixed-use overlay zone. The first is regarding signage along the streetscape. Section SI-7 pertaining to large signs that dominate a building facade or the streetscape should not be permitted. And the second is from Section SI-8 pertaining to billboards being strictly prohibited. There are mandatory findings for a zone variance. The first is that there are special circumstances, and the special circumstances applicable to the property involved is that it is adjacent to the SR-99 freeway, and MU overlay zone is too restrictive regarding signage along major highways such as 99. Other commercially zoned properties in the C2 zone along SR-99 are allowed by right to have billboards, and it would be unjust to deprive the applicant of the commercial use of his property in its entirety. The second finding is that the granting of the variance will be subject to conditions, and this would not constitute grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity, because the scope of the variance is limited to the placement of a billboard on the subject property, and the variance is conditioned, so that it does not constitute a special privilege. The third finding is that the variance authorizes, does not authorize a use which is not otherwise expressly authorized by the zone. And as mentioned previously, the C2 zone does not signage without any restrictions, and it is the MU overlay zone that is causing the restriction in this instance. And the fourth finding is the granting is consistent with the general plan, and staff has made findings, but this variance will be consistent. This is the site plan. And, uh, the sign will conform to all county and Caltrans regulations and site, and setbacks. And the applicant will have to go to Caltrans as well. And that concludes the staff's report, and this is the recommendation under your commission.
Do my fellow commissioners have any questions for staff?
What questioner? What are the dimensions on that sign there here, but I can't see it?
You're asking me that?
That blind leading the blind.
Were we talking about that earlier? Neither of us could see.
Could anybody?
Said 14 by 48, double-sided screen sign mounted on a single pole, overall height 50 feet over ground.
And, um, it looks like it's an LED sign?
Yes, that's a... Light, light sign.
Hi, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Might be probably for staff or maybe for Eric. Now, this is in the, oh, wait, I think it was...
C2 MU zone.
Could you put the slide up there that had the Traver Community Plan on it? There, whoop, back up. I think that was it.
Go that way.
No, go, uh, it was in the graph, not on the picture. It's not a graphic. It's a, it's, uh, written, it's typed.
On the entitlement?
Yes. I don't know if it's in that...
No.
No, not that one. There we go. No, that wasn't it. It had to do with the Traver Community Plan, and then it was, uh, it was the, it was the actual...
So you were at the beginning.
Actual, and it went pretty fast. Wait a minute, here we go. Okay, that's the one right there. This is our ordinance here, right?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay.
This is the, this is the Traver Community Plan, the development standards within the plan.
All right. Now, my question, I guess, is, the last sentence is, is SI-18 pertaining to billboard strictly prohibited, strictly prohibited. Is, does Traver Community Plan, does that have the authority to prohibit it?
Through the chair, uh, well, when we, as far as legislative intent, going back to when we initially commuted, created the mixed-use overlay zone, this was always meant to be very flexible. In fact, the community plan itself gives the discretion to the planning director to administratively make those changes for the most part. This is the only one instance where we did put in strictly, and that was meant if we were going to vary it, that it would come before the planning commission. So it would come before discretionary body in this, in this one instance.
So, okay, so, I mean, it was put in there because we had our Traver Community Plan meetings, and people showed up, and was this, was there testimony?
No.
That they, they, they wanted to preserve the way of looking, that...
Through, through the chair, no. This was more staff's kind of direction that we had been given throughout time from the, through the general plan and through the board of supervisors. So we wanted to at least stop us administratively from making that, that change or making a different decision, but to leave it to the discretionary body to make that decision. But no, this was not based on any community sentiment.
Okay.
And that's true for, just for the record, that's true of all the 99 communities.
Mr. Washington, did you want to say something, or?
Sure, I just, I just follow up. Mike Washington, Slade County Attorney. This development standards, again, as, as Director Block had said, that the MU overlay is, is designed to provide more flexibility, not less. C2 allows it by right, and the MU overlay actually provided in this instance further restrictions rather than more flexibility. This was, I would say, inadvertent on the 99 corridor. We've used these development standards, again, there's no specific community input on this particular area, but these were standards that we've used through the mixed-use overlay throughout all of our community plan updates. What might be appropriate in other communities where we're not looking at that, when there's not a 99 corridor right along side of it, that it might be more appropriate. But this is strictly, we have a long-running history of trying to reduce billboards in ag zone areas and bring them into the communities, and that's how historically we've, we've developed and allowed billboard usage through the county, is along corridors and trying to strictly get them within development boundaries rather than out in the ag areas. And this would fall in line with that long history of our practice in this county. So that's what I'm looking at. We have looked at these, this overlay standards, and we revised the revisions as we move forward. As part of it, we, one thing that we've added, and we've done that throughout the, all of the plans, is we revised the, to allow microbreweries. At the beginning, we didn't accommodate that. It wasn't kind of in the forefront of our thinking originally, but as, as we've been proceeding with these community plans, we incorporated microbrewery as a, as a potential use, because otherwise, anything with alcohol manufacturing was in the M1 zone only, which isn't really appropriate for a restaurant-type microbrewery that's trendy right now. So we've made these revisions along the way. This was maybe, and it's appropriate for the majority of the community, but not necessarily adjacent to the freeway, where that's where we want to direct these types of signs to. And yes, it's a video, it's an LED, such like we've had, you know, along the southern part of the city of Teleri, there's a few billboards such like that located there, so that's what this is.
Are those billboards in Teleri the same size as this one?
I believe one of them might be the same, approximately the same. This is, this isn't extraordinarily large. Billboards are large by nature, so it's, it's not that it's an extraordinarily large or high billboard. It's, it's, it's a common size for these types of billboards.
I have a couple of questions. So if this were, if it were approved, which we still have to decide, but if it were approved, does that mean that the next parcel to this property could also put a billboard in the next one to that? Is it setting precedent, or is this specific to this case?
Well, it's specific to this case, and, and the other piece of this is that any billboard along a state highway has to get approved through Caltrans. Caltrans has restrictions on how close they can be. I believe there's, there's a minimum 500-foot distance between billboards, but there's also, I think, 1,000 feet separation between an off-ramp. So there, these by nature will limit the number of billboard opportunities in, in Traver, because there already is an existing couple there, so it's really, there's not much more room for anything to meet the Caltrans standards.
And my second question was, this has to be near the freeway side, right? So they couldn't decide by this permit to then put it on the far side of their property?
No, this, this approval is specific for this site, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's my question. Any more questions from fellow commissioners? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here today? Is, is there anyone that wants to speak up for or against? Um, okay, then I will open the public hearing.
You just did.
No? That was it?
You just did.
Okay, so I did? I'm ahead of myself. All right, then if no one is here for or against, then I will close the hearing. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion?
I have a question.
We closed the hearing, so what do I do now?
You can open it.
Open it again?
You can reopen it.
Okay, I will reopen the hearing. Come up and...
I work with Mike and...
Well, through, to the chair. You can come up and state your name.
State your name, and, yeah.
One question that was asked.
What's your name?
My name is Jeremy, I'm sorry.
And where, give me an address.
My name is Jeremy Gregory. I actually own a handful of billboards throughout the Central Valley from Stockton, O'Leary, Baker.
Where are you, where are you from? What's your address?
From Teleri. Born, raised right here.
Through the chair, what's your address?
Yeah.
14149 C Avenue 228, Teleri, California.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I should know better. My question was, I think that your, it was actually your question, is this sets precedence for the next billboard locations, and I don't know if that answer was answered correctly. So if this is approved, Aaron, I, I worked with other locations that kind of mirrored this one about a year ago, and the Pixley-Tipton area that were, area that were also over the last year, given the MU zoning, I would like to revisit those locations. Would that be a possibility once this is approved?
I believe that, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the answer from Mr. Washington was that this is an, Dana, right? Okay, good. I'm blind right now. I believe the answer was that this is specific to this property, so it's not setting precedent, so, and I believe that the language in there about being strictly prohibited means that if you were to have your own request, it would have to come up against that provision if that were the same case.
Well, I, I get it.
And then through the chair, I mean, this, as I said...
We know I'm after, so...
As stated before, a zoning variance is always unique to its absolute location, so as we've told you before, the variance is always a possibility, but the chances of approval are based on the discretion of this planning commission in a unique situation.
What makes this location so unique compared to another one adjacent to 99, let's call it in a different township, as Goshen or Pixley or Tipton?
I think that that's a separate, is that a separate issue?
Well, no, 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 through the chair, I think the findings that were made by staff here clearly illustrate the, the location, the zoning, the land use were very specific to this one. So as far as, as Mr. Washington also stated too, all the regulatory requirements of Caltrans, all those elicit to the findings and stuff that's made in regards to the uniqueness of this situation.
Sure, I'm not for it or against it. I just want to fully understand what, what this variance has for future billboards, you know, in these same sort of zonings. I, I worked here in Teleri County for the last 15 years. I own a handful of billboards, like I said, so I'm quite familiar with what I'm doing and how much energy it takes and put these boards in the area. It's a lot of work.
Would that be something that you could sit down with staff and discuss? That might be appropriate to have that conversation with staff?
I, I have a billboard within a few thousand foot of this particular billboard that I'm working with right now, and I just, the only reason I'm here is to find out kind of variance is going to have in the future on my particular board I have there in, in Traver.
I believe Aaron said that, and Mr. Washington said, that this particular decision that we're making today applies only to this case.
I'm fully aware of that, okay.
And through the chair, we're always happy to discuss every possibility with...
They could go into more detail with you at a meeting.
Sure, and it's just, I, I've stepped in the county before, but it's in you, like, like this gentleman said, the last line says strictly prohibited, and I've kind of, how do you say, looked at some of these zonings and told, no way, not going to happen, and here we are, and I'm just like, well, you know...
The only, let me, let me, um, draw a line under it in the sense... The only, let me, let me draw a line under it in the sense that we're only allowed as the commission to vote on an agenda item and that agenda item is whether we're going to allow this particular variance. And so, anything outside of that about whether your properties might be allowed to have that is a separate issue, which we can't decide on. So it might be more appropriate to have that conversation with staff when they have time and you have time to go over it in detail.
Sure.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to ask questions or present before I close the hearing again? Okay, last chance. All right, hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on this item? Or Dana, did you want to say something else?
I am just recommending that you approve the variants.
Okay.
So I make the motion, adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring-
Yeah, to the chair.
Yeah.
That's a separate one.
We're on a C.
On the line below.
Yeah.
Sorry. My air. Okay. Approved category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA Guide 92, Title 14 California Code Regulation Sections 1.5303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, conditionally approved with no variance, PZB 19011.
I'll saga.
Okay. Roll poll.
Take out one.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Motion passes.
Motion passes. And we need to bring back our chairman and commissioner.
Really?
Are they listening?
Go back.
Thank you.
Initial study and mitigated, pardon me. Initial study and mitigated negative declaration ISMND consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guidelines and adoption of the mitigate, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program MMRP for PSP 19-003 and a special use permit number PSP 19-003 to allow the construction and operation of a plus or minus 20 megawatt solar generation facility on a 150.33 acre parcel in the AE40 exclusive agricultural 40 acre minimum zone. Site is located on the north side of Avenue 200, bounded on the west by Road 164 and on the east by Road 168, approximately six miles southeast of Tulare. And our contact this morning will be Mr. Aaron Bach.
Thank you, Chairman Nellies, Commissioners. I'm Aaron Bach, Planning Director with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And before you today is the use permit and MND mitigated negative declaration for Glover Solar. I actually have Adam Furman here who's going to add to my presentation at the end, so there won't be necessarily an open public hearing for him to present. But quickly, by way of background, what I'd like to do is just go by the numbers. Okay, so there are 1,066,615 acres in the Williamson Act in Tulare County of the 4,824 square miles of Tulare County. There are 773,500 acres in the Rural Valley Lands Plan and we have Sigma coming along with, depending on which GSA you're in, 219,000 in the Greater Quea area and 116,000 acres in the East Quea area, which this project splits. And overall, there are 77,600 acre feet on average since 1998 of overcharge as far as water in the combined Quea GSA. So this project will probably represent over 100,000 acre feet on any given year of agricultural water that is no longer being used and solar projects are going to be one of the highest priorities as far as future development projects on agricultural land. As stated, there's quite a bit of acreage in this county, this Rural Valley Lands Plan that cannot be developed for anything that's inconsistent with agriculture. And as you will find, the county has found that these solar projects are consistent with agriculture.
Mr. Bach, question.
Did anybody have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Bach. You mentioned the Williamson Act. Is this in the Williamson Act?
Yes.
Do we get comment from the Department of Climate?
We did have a comment from the Department of Conservation, that's why I displayed all those numbers into the record, says we did respond to the Department of Conservation. And I will get to that moment when we discuss SEQA because that's where the comment came through, you know, it wasn't necessarily a SEQA question, but I will give you our responses at that time.
Okay.
All right, so the request is for a special use permit, initial study mitigated negative declaration for the 20 megawatt solar facility southeast of the city of Tulare, north side of Avenue 200, bounded by Road 164 on the west side and Road 168 on the east. As you can see, the project location, that is smack dab in what we call the white areas where you would not have any surface water coverage by Plandu, South Lenzi and east of the city of Tulare. As far as notification, we notified everybody. We did receive one phone call from one of the neighbors asking what the project was about, that after staff discussed the project with them, we have not heard from them since. And as discussed, we did here, received one comment from the Department of Conservation. So the environmental document itself is a mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring reporting program, as you see in the record, that is mostly related to biological, cultural aspects of the project. It did go to the State Clering House for a 30 day review and we did get the comment from the Department of Conservation. What they were asking for was a clarification of how we analyze solar projects. The board supervisors has found solar projects consistent with the Williamson Act based on our findings and we did find this one to be in fact consistent, mostly because of the lack of it being farmed historically and also because of, as I just discussed, there is one act with agricultural land throughout this county and there's more. In the future, we are going to create through the conflicts of legislation throughout the state where we have the strong desire to preserve agriculture and the desire to reduce water usage, the, the conflict that's going to lead to some sort form of development necessary for farmers to make a living and if they could lease out the property for solar purposes with the intent that ultimately it will be reclaimed within 35 years, that it could be put back in full agricultural use, so.
Question, Mr. Bach, when it comes back in 35 years, are they going to still have water rights?
I would say this area, I would tell you, this area is going to be smack dab in the white areas, so it just depends. You know, you have 77,000 acre feet of need to reduce the overall water usage and that's, most people are going to either have to pay more or hopefully we can use the carrots out there as far as getting credits for creating basins and the like to work our way out of it. But if enforcement comes along and we are not able to make our sustainable yields, it's likely that anybody's not using a water right. And water rights have to be perfected by 2015, by the way, so if, if they don't use it over time, they don't necessarily lose it, but it's a much steeper cliff, hill to climb as far as reusing water.
That's the whole issue, yeah.
So I think it is very possible to be return to agricultural use. Maybe over time, this will continue to be for solar purposes, but because we consider it a utility infrastructure wise, this, this complies with our uniform rules and complies with every other aspect of our findings that are necessary to say it's compatible with agriculture. But again, that's, the Department of Conservation was just asking for a clarification on how we make those findings and we provided that to them. They weren't really asking a SEQA question here, but nonetheless, we did provide that to them. And as far as the mitigation measures, as we discussed, mostly play the biological and cultural aspects to the project and there's no substantial evidence that the project as revised would have a significant effect on the environment. The entitlement is bound to section 16. We have general plan policies in regards to energy production and energy conservation. As I discussed, we, there are the findings in the records for the uniform rules for agricultural reserves and Williamson Act contract contents. The board supervisors through resolution said that solar and wind electrical generation facilities are private and public utility structures and therefore is only subject to use permit where the electrical generation is designed for offsite set. Here's a vicinity aerial of the site. A little bit closer. And here you can see the site plan. And hopefully Adam will give you a little bit more detail on the aspects of the project as far as the phasing and everything else. That's my guess. So, we're going to speed up at this time as far as that. And here you can see the site plan as well.
Are you, Mr. Bach, are you going to come back and address the Department of Conservation?
I can definitely do that in more detail if it's the planning commission push.
Just what we just received. I just, those are the comments, yeah, I didn't, we're in the, we just took that handed to comments. Go ahead.
Right. Well, again, okay. Well, I could do that at this time. I, I would rather come back at the end of Adam's presentation so he can get some more sense of what the project entails in more detail on that. So, the consultant, Adam, everyone would like to come up and give his presentation.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Adam Furman, 5601 East Slosen Avenue, City of Commerce, California. And thank you, Mr. Bach, for that presentation. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Nellies. So I'm actually the applicant, I'm not a consultant. So, this is going to be a very brief sort of overview of the project. Much of it has already been kind of touched upon in the course of the presentation. So this is the Glover Solar project and here the applicant is Glover Solar LLC and that is a 50/50 joint venture between Colwell Solar and Samsung. I am the permitting manager for Samsung Colwell Energy. So, project overview, it's a 20 megawatt photovoltaic solar project that will be located on approximately 150 acres of vacant land that is currently zoned exclusive agriculture. The project is expected to have a 35 year lifespan and will here connect at the SoCal Edison Bliss Substation, which is located approximately half a mile north of the project site. Construction is expected to last approximately eight months. At peak labor, we'll probably have at most two hundred folks on the site working at any given time.
Adam, can you hold a second because I, just a procedural question running through my mind and this may be for you too. If you're not working for the county and you're part of the applicant, do we have to open the hearing?
I don't know. The chair has suggested this would be part of the, the staff's presentation at this time and the applicant is always able to make the staff presentation.
Okay. Sorry, just had to clarify. Sorry about that.
So a SEQA mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project, was prepared by Tulare County. The environmental benefit in the nutshell for this project is we will be offsetting over 40,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent for you. Here's another aerial view of the project site. So you can see it is located east, or sorry, in west Tulare County. APN 1968060011 and the yellow line is the transmission line that will here connect the project over to the SoCal Edison Bliss Substation.
That's an unusual APN number. Four digits in front. Is there a reason for that? I'm questioning whether that's the right idea.
Okay, so, project components. So, solar panels are very simple, especially when compared to your typical fossil fuel energy facilities. These are going to be photovoltaic panels that are going to be installed onto a single axis tracker system. Now, the single axis tracker system essentially allows the panels to follow the sun over the course of the day, from east to west, allowing for a maximum generation of power. There are going to be several electrical facilities on the site, including combiner boxes, inverters, transformers and onsite substations. There will also be a meteorological station, a six foot security fence, internal access roads and there is potential to include a energy storage system of five megawatts, five megawatt hours.
Quick question. Where do you access these solar panels from?
So, the panels have not been procured yet at this time, but there are several varieties of panels that can be used.
Made in the US or not?
At this time, that has not been decided, but they can be American, Japanese or Chinese, but at this time, that is not been decided.
So we can make that determination?
I don't think so. We'll make a recommendation and we will-
Just a comment, just a comment.
Well, some last longer than others, like 10 years versus 50.
Sure. Yes, and, and there's always new technology coming out with higher efficiency, so at the time that we procure, we will probably go with the most cost effective at that time. Again, here is the overall site layout or site plan that was submitted for the special use permit application. Now, this is the project site, a complete full buildout, so we, essentially what we'd like to do is cover the entire site with panels at this stage in development, but in all likelihood, as we get closer to the engineering design, the footprint will be more refined, so it won't necessarily be completely covered in the panels as you see here, but we do want to show maximum buildout in the event that we do need to, I guess, develop the entire footprint. Project construction. This can be divided up into three primary phases. First phase is site preparation. Fortunately, this site is already a fairly flat site, so we do not need to do any grading on the site. Instead, instead we implement a low impact mow and roll technique, which essentially just keeps out a lot of the vegetation on site, but actually leaves a lot of the root systems in place. Now, this provides two benefits. One, it prevents future dust from leaving the site and also limits any sort of sediment runoff during storms. There will also be access roads, oh, wrong, it's access roads, implement or install, parking and staging areas as well as a security fence. Phase two of construction, now this will be probably the tightest amount of construction workers at, at any time during construction. This is when we install the tracker system and photovoltaic panels. Now, this is a very systematic approach. They will pile drive all the piles into the ground and then construction crews essentially just go from one road to the next installing the tracker system, or, or sorry, the tubes and then the panels as well as the wire. Then we move on to phase three, which is a lot of the, more of the larger electrical components, including the combiner boxes, transformers, inverters, a SCADA system, all electrical cabling, as well as the substation or also called a switching station. Now, the switching station will essentially collect all of the onsite electrical cables that are at a 34.5 KB and will step it up to 66 KB so that it can here connect to the Bliss Substation. Project operation, so the project is expected to have a 35 year lifespan. Will be operating seven days a week, 365 days a year. We anticipate approximately one to two panel washing, or panel washing to occur one to two times per year. If we have a good rain season, we won't have to wash panels out. This will be the project will be monitored from a remote location via a supervisory control and data acquisition system, which essentially allows the, the folks that are monitoring the site, if one panel goes down, a light pops up or another- the site, if one panel goes down, a light pops up, or another vacation goes to our SCADA system, we're able to get construction and maintenance crews out there to fix any issues that may occur. We're also able to shut down the system from a remote location in the event of any emergency. Additionally, we will have security measures in place, including a fence, security lighting, and cameras. So that concludes my brief presentation. Here's my contact information if you have any follow-up questions after this hearing. Otherwise, I thank you for your time and we appreciate your support and we will have our special experience.
Question, at the end of the, well, first question here, you secured the PPA for the, for the contract for the?
We have not secured the PPA yet. Oftentimes, what we tend to do is we will, when we get the project permitted, it's a much more marketable project for the PPA process. So this occasion, we are looking to get a permit for.
Do you expect the permit, or do you expect the contract will be thirty-five years?
Generally, they are on the lower end, about twenty years per PPA contracts, but there's always the option to extend it past twenty, twenty years or have another contract in place.
Do you have a project in Alpa, correct?
What?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will we approve one of these Samsung projects in Alpa?
I am going to do this at some time, about either nine months, but I do have my colleague, Tom Cooper here, who may be able to speak to that, not sure if he was involved. He, Tom Cooper is from Coldwell Solar, so I'm not sharing him.
You know, it was a Samsung. They invited us planning commissioners to go, this is a few years ago.
Was it the White, it was?
South of Alpa.
I'm not, doesn't ring a bell.
Might be the White River projects.
Yeah.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, that was before my time.
Nice project, you ought to say that, but it's a nice project.
I have another question here.
Go ahead, Ed.
Sorry. What, at the end of the thirty-five years, what's the reclamation plan? What happens to the?
So they're actually fairly simple. Right now, we, we do not have a reclamation plan in place, but they are very typical of these types of projects where you let EPC contractor go out, essentially you take out all the wiring, you pull out the piles from the ground. Because we didn't do any grading, this site is relatively similar to the way it will have been prior, vegetation is allowed to grow back. Typically, a size, a twenty megawatt project can be decommissioned within five months or so and all the materials are then recycled. Most of these solar panels do have a environmental requirement to be recycled with the main factor.
Yeah, okay. So in the event in twenty years, you do not get a renewed contract, will you be required at that time to reclaim the property?
That's, I'm not too sure on that one.
I would, I, sorry, I apologize for kind of putting you in here, but I have another appointment across town, so I just wanted to get some things. Yes, a reclamation plan is a requirement of this approval. There's a developer agreement that's required and that concludes the reclamation plan and financial funding or bonding to make sure that at the end of the life of the project, it is reclaimed to the land existing conditions now are better than they are now. So that's a requirement of your approval that will be required of this project as it is with all of our commercial utility scale solar projects. I just want to touch a couple of things. On the DOC letter, in a nutshell, there's two components of what they're talking about. One is their assertion that it's a permanent conversion of ag land to non-ag use, which we do not agree with because of the financial assurances and the reclamation. We've, this has been determined by the board supervisors back in two thousand and ten, reaffirmed in two thousand and thirteen, and all of our, all of our these commercial projects are on ag land themselves. Many, many acres are on Williamson Act land that are finally compatible again because this is compatible with our uniform rules. The second piece is in two thousand and thirteen, the board revisited the criteria and Aaron can go through Exhibit A of the Williamson Act conformity checklist, so to speak, that's in detail in your packet on page ninety. But the other piece is, one of the components of citing commercial projects is that you're trying to avoid permanent crops, irrigated pine land, and, and those issues is to try to avoid those. In this case, a portion of the site is considered under FMMP mapping as prime, however, it does not have surface water, it's in a wide area. And then other areas of it are semi-agricultural, commercial, rural, commercial, about eight percent of the property is that, and then there's also farmland of local importance, which is a step down ladder as well. So the whole site itself is not prime, it's not irrigated, and we're viewing it in that, in that relation as we make the determinations of the availability plan. But Aaron, if you go into detail, I just want to touch that basis. It's a temporary use and that's been affirmed by the board on all of our commercial, which we have in approximately thirty of the county, many of them are Williamson Act land. Only one cancellation was ever done, and that was on a very small portion of one, and that was the developer's own initiative to take us out of Williamson Act. We find this is compatible with the Williamson Act. Do you have any direct questions you can ask me now, otherwise I'm going to have to excuse myself, sorry.
Well, Hector, Hector, our chief environmental planner had written a response to this, is that right?
Yes.
And so one of, one of the ideas, I just quickly scanned through this, was to, is this to recharge groundwater by using, by taking it out of service? Is that, you get credit for that? Is that, is that the scheme here, so to speak?
Well, I don't know that you get necessarily credit, but yes, it's, it's less impactful because this is, again, we're in the, in the era of sigma and groundwater overdrafting. Any, any reduction in groundwater pumping is going to be a benefit to the environment, certainly. And we're going to find this more and more, plus, besides just this particular project, there will be more and more community choice projects. We're doing fifty-five megawatts, it's already been approved as a, as a larger project down near Rich Grove of the East Bay communities that are, that have, are going to be building this on their own to, to help offset the costs of their utilities. You're going to see more and more of those throughout the state, throughout the county and McFarland, especially the mandates to go to renewable energy sources in the state as well as the impacts of overdrafting of groundwater.
I have a question regarding comment four, I don't know if this would be for you, Mr. Washington, or for, you know, staff so that you could get on, but it was saying that the department, so the DOC was asking for a copy of the board supervisor's unique proposal, and I just wanted to make sure that they got that, or did they get a summary of that?
Yeah, they, they, they have copies of the board's criteria for, for signing the solar. So that's part of, that's part of our response to the DOC and.
Thank you, Mike.
Just real quickly to answer Mr. Diaz's question, that was the question that the Department of Conservation asked us to see our resolutions and how we used our two-tier process, because they did want us to use ag easements as mitigation. And again, we would say, what mitigation? This project is temporary nature, it's not permanent, and giving the Department of Conservation money was not appropriate in this circumstance.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing and I will open the hearing to the public at this time for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to come up and speak on behalf of or opposed to this project? If not, I will close public testimony at this time and look for any closing commentary and/or motion.
Just, I've got a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
In reality, I have to agree with Department of Conservation, this will permanently remove it from agriculture. After twenty, first of all, it might be a thirty-five year lifespan, but it's going to be probably a twenty-year contract. And in twenty years, the technology is going to be so far advanced that this is going to be a white elephant and probably won't be renewed because they can't, won't be able to generate power economically, which means it's got to come out. But if they don't use their water, particularly with sigma and whatnot, in the next twenty years, they're never going to get it back.
Again, that's not, they perfected their water rights as of two thousand and fifteen. It's really, if they were to add another well to the site or anything like that, it would be incumbent upon the GSA and the county to make the determination on whether they could sink another well up to the allocation they've already been using. So if they're using water right now, they perfected that, so that doesn't roll away. But as Mr. Washington was saying, the opportunity here is to use less water in the meantime. Whether, and that's why Mr. Washington did point out the reclamation plan as a requirement to make sure that it can be reused as agriculture, so I would, I would agree with that, Sam.
Ralph, I think we're going to find that due to sigma, probably without this, probably twenty to forty percent of the land, particularly down closer to Pixie Irrigation District, is going to be fallow. But, so, we need to protect as much as we can farm, property that, so that we can continue to farm water that we can get, or probably can get water.
Well, if the bullet train comes in, we'll have a lot of people moving into the area.
As I do sit on.
There will have subdivisions there, can I tell you?
For the GSAs. Um, I would say that solar is one of the policies that is going to be offered up as a solution through these GSAs that's to move forward through their GSPs and programs. That's one of the highlights that Department of Water Resources looks at as a usage of land in the time to build homes or anything else.
Mr. Washington mentioned that there were several existing solar sites on, already existing on Williamson Act, and I'm assuming that they were not challenged by the Department of Conservation.
Initially, there were some challenges to the policies, but as the supervisor stated, Mr. Anderson did, you know, we are the lead agency and we are the determiners of the Williamson Act. We look at the Williamson Act very carefully as a contract between the county and these landowners. So that, and again, we're not even paid to maintain it anymore because the subvention funds have gone away. There are, as I stated, over a million acres in the Williamson Act in Tulare County. So in, on top of that, we do have the Rural Valley Lands Plan. So these are two policies that lock these farmers into doing agriculture and then to further hinder them from potentially making any money off their properties by not allowing them something like solar. When we look at it squarely as public infrastructure, we're really, I mean, really buying, buying any possibility for this program to have any value. So that's, again, why we disagree that this is going to necessarily just be followed afterwards and/or at least look at this as the board looks at this as consistent with the Williamson Act.
Question, if, and I don't understand all the terms that are being used, but if the contract that you were talking about is not renewed after twenty years and this approval is for thirty-five years, would it just sit for fifteen or could we condition that it has to be reclaimed after the twenty years if the contract's not renewed?
This is a use permit, it is in your power to require that it be reclaimed at any time as a conditional. And it would be very helpful if the applicant was voluntarily amenable to that.
Aaron?
I, I, can you proceed exactly what the condition would be?
Um, what's the, what's that permit that you were talking about?
PPA, it's a.
PPA.
Power purchase agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could condition it if, if, if the property was without a power purchase agreement for more than a year.
Yeah.
Then it had to come out.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't know if I can accept something, maybe propose something different if there is a certain duration of time at which the project is no longer producing energy in, into the grid. Can we rephrase it that way? Because, I mean, I'm not sure if it's going to happen twenty years from now, I can't speak on behalf of our business development team, so I can't concede to that. But I think we may be willing if, for example, at the end of twenty years, if we do not have another contract in place and it's just sitting there not providing energy into the grid, then maybe at that time, we could consider the reclamation, but unfortunately, I'm unable to kind of make that decision on behalf of my company.
Do you want him to go away and come back?
Because we, we can, what's that?
Do you want him to go away and come back with an answer?
Um, because putting power into the grid can be, you know, a light bulb's worth. I mean, then we have to get into nuances of that. So, and, and we can make the decision conditional whether or not your client accepts it. I'm just trying to think, you know, rather than have something sitting there fifteen years not doing anything productive.
Yeah. So I would need to see.
Do you want to, do you want to come back?
I, don't need to, I mean, if, I mean, is it possible to move forward the motion without that commissioner?
We can't condition after.
Well, um, well, through the chair, what we could do is that we do put a condition on it that if it does remain inactive for a certain amount of time and discuss that amount of time with the applicant, we could place that amount of time, whether it's one years or five years, as a condition. And I think that the applicant would be amenable to.
Yeah, that's, that's something we could agree to, is if not, not necessarily tie it to a power purchase agreement, but if we tie it to after the end of twenty-year power purchase agreement or whatever, if the project is sitting there not providing energy to the grid for a two-year period, for example, we could re, or.
Well, just like a lease on a lot of things, commercial leases, the tenant or whomever the, has to, has to serve notice so many days or months or years ahead of the expiration date. Is there anything, what, what is your contract with the power purchase agreement?
So we don't have a power purchase agreement.
No, but when you do, what is, what is the notification prior to expiration of whether they will, or you will mutually together agree on a new contract?
They can vary also. Yeah, we do.
Well, you'll have to come up and, and speak if you'd like to come up and talk. Please, you can state, state who you are, sir, and your address. And we're still not in a public hearing, by the way.
Are we opening?
No, we're not in a public, open testimony.
If you'd like to open it.
Would you like me to do that?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing to testimony by the public and please state your name and address.
Good morning, my name's Tom Cooper. I'm with Coldwell Solar, five hundred and ninety-nine drive Rockland, California, nine four five seven five. And I guess my comment would be regarding the PPA, there's no one set form for PPA. Each PPA is negotiated and so to say that.
That's my point. When is it negotiated?
At the outset.
And at the end of the term, when is it negotiated or not?
Well, it's negotiated or at the end of the twenty, typically at the end of the twenty, so.
Let's say you're in the twenty, the nineteenth year, when does the trigger go to whether you're going to do it again or not?
At the end of the PPA, the twenty year.
So do you just let it go to expiration and then?
Probably a month or two prior.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So then, and then the determination would be made at that point whether to extend for fifteen more years or not. I guess I'm a little hesitant to. Well, that concludes my comments.
Well, to my fellow commissioners, we, we could put a condition in that says that, you know, X number of months prior to expiration of this twenty-year period. I think it should be based on when it stops functioning.
Right. I don't want to get in and negotiate there.
No, 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 no. But you, you want to do something with this land after the PPA, right?
I have a suggestion and there's precedent and we've used in the past for, for dairies that have been empty and we've allowed them to come back into business up to two years without coming in for, to redo their use permit. So we do have some, a timeframe that we've, we've used in the past for other businesses that kind of, kind of come and go.
So how would you word that?
Well, I would just.
Our, our director will tell us.
Yeah, if you could restate the last statement made as far as Mr. Diaz.
If I could restate it?
Yeah.
We've got precedent on the timeframe for other businesses that have, that, that use the same facility, but kind of come and go with different leases and different. the same facility, but kinda come and go with different leases and different contracts. And we've allowed up to two years before they have to come back and renew their use permit.
And what we could, the same thing, flip side of the coin, say if this project fails to be operational for two years, that they would come back in for a use permit at that time or come into the reclamation plan. And the reclamation plans are, we're familiar with them from SMRA, and that's what I think we're aiming towards here. So at, at the end of two years, if they fail to continue to operate, that they would come back in for another use.
Subsequent to the expiration.
Subsequent.
We'll have an assurance bond on that.
Uh, yes.
And how do we define operation?
Uh, as far as providing energy to.
The grid.
To the power provider. Providing energy to the power.
To the grid.
To the grid.
So it's not, not like the panels can power the shed on the property and that considers operations, no?
It's to the grid.
To the grid, okay.
In the future, if they're able to provide power to the dairy and store, or anybody else in the general area, they would be more than glad to accommodate.
Okay, got it.
And I would, I would like, if I could, just to interject and answer your question, that would be considered onsite use, and that's totally different. What we're doing is exporting to the grid, so that would be.
They're exporting.
Okay.
Again, it's off-site locally versus to the grid. And onsite would be by right, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions from the commissioners?
So, I think Ed might need to make the motions so we can word it properly.
We're still, we're still in public testimony. So is anyone else in, any other members of the public would like to comment at this time? If not, I'll close the public testimony. And we'll look for some wording to attach to a motion.
It's your idea, it's open.
Well, I'm not against solar and everything.
Well, through the chair, through the chair, make this a little easier for you. The first motion is the CEQA motion, so let's do that one first, and then we'll work on the words that I'm sure my.
On the special use permit.
Uh, for the second motion.
So do I have a motion on the first portion of this dual motion? Do I have a, do I have a, do I have a motion?
Okay, I'm falling asleep, so I make a motion, we approve the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring reporting program for the special use permit, PSP nineteen dash zero zero three, as being compliance with California CEQA and State CEQA guidelines for the implement of California Environmental Quality Act. That's.
Do I have a second?
Act nineteen seventy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
McAlway?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Wayback?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Mr. Bach, would you like to hang the?
All right, through the chair, to assist the commission, the use permit would be approved with the condition that if the project fails to provide energy to the grid for a term of two years, that the applicant would come back in and go get, go get another use permit.
So the applicant will be required to return to the planning commission.
Or, or if they elect not to, or remove the reclaim, or reclaim.
Or reclaim the land.
I like this better because this is anytime. Because what if they went belly up in two years, you still have to reclaim it.
No, they're, they're gonna have a contract with the power company.
But what if the power company, something could happen.
Oh, we don't.
But if it ceases to operate in two years.
No, to the chair, and I'd like to say after the twenty years, I mean, you're already limited then from the thirty-five years they're requesting, so.
Okay. So could I have a motion on the part two with the add-on commentary as described by Mr. Bach?
Through the chair, the term would, term of this condition would be that if the facility fails to operate at the end of twenty years for the term of two years, that the applicant would be required to return to the commission to get his permit.
Or.
Or to reclaim the property as stated in their commission plan.
Well, not knowing what the contract like is gonna be the initial on this, because we have to, upon expiration of the initial PPA?
Again, pretty much all of our use permits for solar run a term of twenty years, so I wouldn't like to distinguish this one necessarily, since it's only for twenty big ones.
All right, let's be consistent then.
All right, do I have a motion on this?
As stated by staff.
Yes, so moved, I'll make that motion to approve the special use permit.
As stated by staff.
PSP nineteen zero zero three as stated by Sada.
I doubt the findings and conditions for approval.
But they're, they're negotiating still.
My concern, I'm sorry to direct this on, but my concern, I guess, is that we, and I don't think you did include language about a finite period of time for the PPA, because we may or may not, if we say twenty years, and we negotiate, which we're working on now, negotiating the PPA, if the utility we're negotiating with wants a twenty-five year PPA, then if we stipulated twenty years here, then we would, that would work. So if we could just add language, something to the effect, at the end of the PPA.
Right, that was.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you're being too presumptive that it's gonna be twenty years.
I'm trying to.
I know that, no, I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing with you, it could be twenty-five, it could be thirty, and then if it is, all this language doesn't mean anything.
But not, but not less than twenty.
All right.
Yeah, no.
At the end of that PPA, whenever it is.
At the end of the PPA, but not less than twenty years.
The term of the PPA.
Question, at the end of, if it's a fifteen-year PPA, and then all of a sudden, technology's moved down the road and they don't want that power anymore, and they won't pay for it, then we wait five more years before we pull it out?
No, if you just say it's the term, whatever the term is.
Because the PPA can be self-closed, I don't know what the conditions of a PPA are.
Yeah.
So it's after the expiration of the PPA.
Aaron's got this twenty years in his hand, he'll whip it up.
Well, like I said, just to be consistent with all of our other solar programs, I'd like to keep it at twenty, but it seems the applicant's okay with the, the, all right, so the condition we got so far is if the project fails to provide energy to the grid for a term of two years.
From expiration, from expiration of the PPA.
All right, at the expiration of the PPA.
Which could be any number.
Fails to provide, provide energy to the grid at the end of the PPA, that the project would be reclaimed at that time.
Would be what?
Reclaimed.
Reclaimed.
Oh, okay, got it.
The reclamation plan would.
And I, I think Commissioner Elliot wanted to get county council's advice on this.
Just teasing.
Just teasing, just testing you.
Is there a possibility that we can refer back to staff to do, to locate something with the applicant, or is the applicant on board?
The applicant appears to be on board at this time. Would you like to hear those words you have, please?
Good answer.
If I can request, just so, because it seems like there's some bit of miscommunication, we can have the planning commission read back the way that you understand the exact language that we're proposing. I think we'd be more comfortable with that, just because I think we're saying something and everyone's on the same page, so.
Right.
We want to understand what your certification is of our proposed commission.
So Aaron will restate it for you, how's that?
And we, we say as per staff's comments, because they're in the record, so that's the official language.
Yeah. It's being recorded.
I'd like Dana to do it.
If the project fails to provide energy to the grid for a period of two years, or at the end of the PPA, the applicant shall return to the planning commission for a new use permit or begin reclamation.
Um, I think that it's at the expiration of the PPA, because the PPA, yeah.
At the.
Yeah, the two years. At the end of the PPA for two years.
So the clock starts ticking.
Does reverse those two?
Right.
Yeah, because otherwise it could be one year.
Or at the end of the PPA, right?
Well, you kept inserting the stuff. If the project fails to provide energy to the grid for, at the, at the expiration of the PPA, or for two years, the applicant shall return to the planning commission for a new PSP or begin reclamation.
Almost there, Dana.
Almost there.
Almost there.
Take that or out.
If the project fails to provide energy at the end of the PPA for a term of up to two years, the project shall be reclaimed back to its original state.
Or return to the planning commission for.
Or return for the.
For that use permit.
That's the, as stated, that's the condition.
Is county council okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, so stated.
So far?
As long as we got the reclamation or coming before the planning.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep, that's in there, that's in there.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a statement as to how he understands this to be?
No, we understand it.
All right, they understand.
As staff just read it into the record, that is the condition that will be added.
All right, so.
Per the minutes of the speaker.
The last version, not the pre-version, right, okay.
As staff just stated.
I will make a motion to approve.
Get a motion.
Could I have a motion, please, as last stated?
Okay, I shall make a motion that we approve this project as stated by staff.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
McAlway?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Wayback?
Yes.
Project is approved, so moved, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? I know solar projects have been around for a while, have we gone twenty years yet and processed one of these?
No.
Through the chair.
So we have no idea whether the PPA is actually gonna work, and they're gonna say, oh yeah, we wanna find some power.
Uh, just with the amount of interest we have right now in solar projects in the county, I'd say that's, the energy providers are all very interested in it, but looking out, using a crystal ball, as Mr. Diaz said, I mean, we don't know. And, but as far as alternative energy, we're certain the state of California, the governor and everybody else are very much into alternative energy requirements, so. And as Mr. Washington said, you're gonna have other counties, other city organizations, other utility providers coming to this county looking to produce energy elsewhere in the state, so, yes, as well.
You know, the technology is gonna change, and we don't know that. I mean, computers were this big in nineteen ninety, and they're now this big. So, who knows, they may get more panels, more power.
If the, if it's still operating and it's still efficient and whatnot, they're gonna find a home for that. It might not go to the main, major utility, because maybe it's too expensive, major utility won't fit, you know, so somebody will find a home for it.
They could drive pumps.
Moving on to item six A, planning director update.
Through the chair, Bach, planning director, just real quickly, the Ivanhoe, Woodville, and Plankview community plans were approved by the board. There was a little bit of discussion about a potential park in Ivanhoe, but besides that, they're pretty seamless as far as the approval process. We are moving on to working on Lemon Cove, and also continuing to work on Colderosi as far as community plants, and Mr. Garrett's working on quite a few EIRs at this time as well, so we continue to stay very busy. Year over year, we had five hundred and eighty-nine projects approved, while receiving about four hundred and eighty, so we continue for three years' running to outperform the applications we're getting, and I think I can, honestly, I can attest to the amount of community plans that we're doing. We also continue to do works, work for Public Works in regards to the environmental permitting for the bridges and for road projects. We've seen a slight uptick recently in the activity in that regard as far as bridge programs. And we're also doing other environmental work for some of the water providers and CSDs, especially as we move forward with Sigma, we foresee doing a lot more work in that arena as the lead agency on environmental projects, so. We did receive the Nathini grant contract, that's a $200,000 grant through the state for climate action, and so it's another, by looking at Nathini in regards to its infrastructure capacity for sewer and storm drainage, and we are currently making application for the SB two money. I know there's a lot of questions of what happens to that $75 recording fee, and there was a question of whether we were going to get it back or not, and I think the state and legislatures, they're requiring that HCB hand it out evenly, so we're looking to do some changes to our general plan and our zoning code to make it that much more easy to produce houses in this county. I think we streamlined the process to a very high degree over the last few years. In fact, I did hear recently, the Ash subdivision we worked on, San Martin Homes had lines out their door, and people spent, stayed overnight to get their agreements for the first few homes that are gonna happen out there. We've, we improved out the final maps for that, and that's quite a deal over the last two weeks, so we're trying to produce as much commercial and residential development to keep up with the state requirements as we can, I would say. All right, Ed, did Mr. Garrett have anything to add, or to Public Works?
Uh, just a quick one, I just wanted to commit to say thank you, Matt, for, you know, your great service with the county and helping Public Works and giving us this the last week, so I just wanna say thank you from Public Works.
Quitter.
Well, we normally sell our, our cover that leaves, or we'd say something like, ah, you're dead. But good luck on your feed mentors, and, and congrats on, you seem to be quit, so congrats. And on another note, I did pass my professional agent license, so I am a PE now, so. Normally, I try to be humble, I'm not sure that, since I'm here, I just wanna show that I am a professional now.
Since we're recording, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's on the record.
On the record, but typically I'm low-key about it, I don't.
So for other, uh, planning commissioners, we have a secret county council person here hiding under the assumed name Clint. We're glad to see Clint, maybe he might come back, that's the word.
He's, yeah, he's scouting.
Thank you.
Matt, what did you say your wife does? What is her profession?
Your fiancee?
She is a criminalist, she does CSI.
Oh, wow.
She has a lot better future than you do.
Well, I make more than hers.
Good choice, good choice.
Well, just to finish that conversation up, Mr. Diaz, you did ask Mr. Wang if his car broke down when he first came here, and obviously fixed it, so. But again, thank you commissioners for moving these projects through. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of reading, and again, we do appreciate all your efforts in, in helping us go through these projects.
Can we say stuff?
Any, well, I'm gonna move on to number seven, are there any other discussion items?
No, again, I wanted to say thanks to Matt and get your opinion on your temporary or permanent replacement.
She's all right.
She's all right, yeah? And the, you're obviously gonna miss the next batch of cookies, but if you come back to one of these meetings and give me enough notice, let, you know, let us know, and we'll have cookies.
I think Clint will gladly accept any cookies.
Let the record read, she refuses to give her background at this point.
What school did you go to? How do you like working with county council?
Went to Vermont Law School, and I've only been with the county for a year, so.
A year or eight years?
A year.
Oh, wow, okay, you're brand new?
Brand new, so.
Where'd you grow up in?
Um, Madera County.
Very good, any other questions or comments? If not, we will meet here again on July thirty-first, Visalia City Hall, Council Chamber. Visalia City Hall, Council Chamber. Uh, and as of right now, this meeting